Have a roll call, um, and then we'll call the meeting to order. Uh, Anita?
Here.
Lorna?
Here.
Uh, Jenny?
Here.
Megan?
Here.
Bill?
Here.
Tanner?
Here.
And is Hayden with us? Nope, he's got senioritis, I guess. Uh, and Lou, uh, Lou will not be joining us tonight. Um, so there is a quorum present, so I would like to call the meeting to order. And, uh, as been our, as has been our practice, if we could do the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic. One nation, under God.
Indivisible.
With liberty and justice. Thank you, thanks. Uh, and I'd also like to, uh, thank those of you who have, uh, joined us on the live stream and, and the other staff. Uh, the other, uh, RSU staff members and who have joined us, uh, as well. So again, I, I'm, I'm in a position of, of thanking everyone, uh, administrators, teachers, parents, and the community for your perseverance as, as this, uh, exceptional year continues. Um, we, we are, uh, and as, as I was reflecting on it, while trying to write a couple of, uh, town, uh, reports, RSU one reports for town meetings. Uh, this, this has certainly been, uh, this, this has not been the year any of us anticipated, uh, back, back in September, even in December. Um, we do have some, some, uh, activities underway, uh, to evaluate and, and, uh, consider what we've accomplished and, and what, and what we need to improve upon. Uh, going forward, our ad hoc committee on distance learning had its, uh, first meeting, um, earlier, uh, in the month. We're going to have another meeting on Wednesday. And Katie, uh, will speak about that during her report. Uh, Patrick sent everyone a, a rather detailed, um, memo of, of his recommendations on how to proceed, uh, with, uh, decisions related to reopening the schools in September. And, and I think, uh, he'll, he'll touch on those briefly during, uh, during his comments. Uh, but I think we all understand that, that this is still a very, an evolving situation. And, and we're in a very formative, uh, position right now. Uh, uh, not, still not quite sure, not quite clear, uh, how, how we're going to, uh, uh, proceed as we finish out this year and as we plan to begin next year. Um, what I do know is, and on top of that, we have to adopt a budget, uh, in June and, and, uh, have a community vote on that July. So what I do know though is, is that the administration and, and this board is, uh, uh, are committed to having as, as positive an end to this, this school year as possible. And we're committed to having a strong start, uh, to the next school year. Uh, even though at this point, we're not sure what that, what that start is going to look like. Anyways, let's get on with the meeting. Item four point O, we have the minutes for, uh, the April twenty seventh, uh, meeting. Vida, uh, Vida sent around or sent out this morning, a revised copy of those minutes. Hopefully everyone, um, uh, got a copy. So do I have a motion to approve or amend the minutes?
I, can you hear me, Steve?
Yes, yeah.
This is Lorna, this is Lorna. On page five, unless I'm reading it incorrectly, the third paragraph down, it says Superintendent Manuel stated that the finance committee can hold another remote meeting. However, we would need some direction on what you would want to see for an increase. And I think that needs to say decrease. Unless I'm missing something.
Makes sense.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks. Any other, uh, any other?
I have the mail, the, the mailed copy. I, I didn't retrieve the one off of the, the latest one. It, under comments from the board chairperson, has that changed from usual to unusual in the first line?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I noticed that. It's anything but usual.
It's anything but usual, exactly. Any other corrections, additions to the minutes? So can I get a motion to?
I'll move approval, Mr. Chairman.
As amended?
As amended, yes.
Okay, a second?
I'll second, this is Lorna.
Thanks, Lorna. Okay, um, we have a motion by Bill, second by Lorna, and we'll have to take the vote by roll call. As, as been our practice. Anita? Anita?
Aye.
Lorna?
Aye.
Jenny?
Aye.
Meg, Megan?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Tanner?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Okay, thank you. Um, item five point O, adjustments to the agenda. Uh, I, I have one. It, in the, uh, policy committee, um, there, there was a recommendation that we put, uh, policy BE, which is, uh, relates to school board meetings, uh, to put that on the agenda as, uh, a first reading. So that would go under new business. And let's make that item eleven point two. Uh, policy BE, school board meetings. Was that distributed, Patrick? Was the policy distributed?
Yes, Vida should have sent that out to you via email.
Did everyone get a copy of it?
I have it on May fourteenth, but that was for our policy committee agenda.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, and I, and I retrieved it off that as well. Did, did, uh, board members who did not attend the policy committee meeting, have you seen policy BE? That would be you, Bill, primarily.
I have not.
Hmm, yeah, I'm not sure, I'm not sure, uh, now, now that I, now that I, uh, started to look for it, um, I, I got it from that May fourteenth, uh, distribution as well. So I, I don't, I didn't, I'm going to, uh, I'm going to suggest obviously that we not put it on the agenda for this evening. Um, and that we'll, we'll distribute it to, uh, we'll distribute it for our June meeting. Uh, it's, it was a pretty straightforward policy. Hopefully it just laid out, uh, the types of regular school board meetings that, that we are, uh, under policy that we're been able to, to, uh, to conduct. But we'll, we'll bring that back in June. Uh, Patrick, do you have other adjustments?
No.
No. Um, public sessions, six point O. Um, I think, I hope all of you saw Patrick's email, um, today, uh, regarding the, um, comments that we received from the public. And I think we've, we've gotten eight of them. And, uh, Patrick said he forwarded one because they are essentially all on the same theme. And, and we do appreciate those, uh, those eight individuals, uh, sending comments in. I'm, I'm just going to read, I'm going to read, uh, the first one I received just to give you, uh, give everyone an indication, uh, who, who's, uh, live streaming of what the comments relate to. Uh, and this was from Rebecca Doyle. Uh, it, it says, "Hi all, I think that looking forward toward next school year and the health risks that we are facing, all schools in the RSU should have full-time nurses. This is uncharted territory and our receptionists should not have to make health-related decisions in the absence of a nurse. I appreciate the time. Thanks, Rebecca Doyle." The, the comments, um, although Rebecca didn't reference it in, in her letter and, and the others I'm looking at, kind of some did, some didn't. But the comments are, are essentially, uh, uh, directed at the situation down in Phippsburg, uh, Phippsburg Elementary, uh, where, uh, we, we only have a, a nurse one day a week, uh, assigned to Phippsburg Elementary. So there were eight comments, you know, again, uh, highlighting the, the extraordinary, uh, situation, uh, as it relates to the COVID, uh, COVID nineteen and, and the lack of nursing coverage, um, except for that one day, um, down in Phippsburg. Thank you for those comments, those public comments.
There were, Steve, this is Lorna.
Yeah.
There were three other, or at least two other comments not related to that. Are we going to read those or did you see those?
I guess I did not see those.
Yeah, that eleven, eleven, eleven forty, um, included three separate emails. One was the nursing from Phippsburg, but the other two that were in that document are, um, you know, ones regarding, uh, E S Y, summer services, and the other ones regarding, um, returning to school in the fall.
If you keep scrolling down, Steve, it's there on that same document.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm sorry. I only, I stopped at the, I stopped at the top, I guess.
I can, I'm looking right at them if, if it's.
Why, why don't you, why don't you read them then, Lorna, because I don't have them.
Sure, there's two. The first one is from, uh, Jill Sinclair, who's also from Phippsburg. And she says, "My name is Jill Sinclair. My son is nine and a recipient of special ed services that include extended school year services. I would like to take this time to speak on his behalf and on behalf of other children like him that have had learning disabilities, that have learning disabilities, and ask that extended school year services be provided in the in-person format versus virtual learning. The virtual learning format can be exceedingly difficult with kids with listening, with learning disabilities. Most of these children require visual support and on-the-spot manipulation of these supports to help them understand the lesson being presented. Many of these same children struggle with social cues and speech. Virtual learning can trigger their social anxiety as they fight with the connection, camera, and knowing when to speak, which in turn can take their focus from the lesson. Some parents are going back to work in June and some are working and trying to balance their special needs, ch, uh, special needs child education in future, all the while not being educators themselves. Virtual learning places an unnecessary burden on childcare providers, parents, and the children who receive these critical services. Many of these children worked much harder than most to master basic skills. With that in mind, please offer summer school to these special children in a way they will get the most benefit and will be accessible. Please consider providing summer school service to children in person. Thank you for your time and consideration. That's Jill Sinclair." And the other one is from an Erica Spider. "Thank you for giving us the opportunity to comment." Oh, this is a person, excuse me, who had realized the deadline had passed on the survey. "My husband and I did not receive an email." But, okay. Uh, "We would like to provide comments. We realize the extreme and unprecedented difficulties presenting themselves with the pandemic. I myself have a compromised immune system. However, to quote from a recent newspaper article, remote education is far less effective and may leave lasting academic damage. Parents are not equipped to parent, to provide distance learning, even with resources at our disposal, such as educational materials and laptops. Many parents are working remotely, keeping the household and teaching their kids. Parents are facing job stability, financial stress, caring for an elderly parent, supporting loved ones, working in the medical field, and single parents. And joint custody households are navigating through uncharted waters with their kids. The education platform provides a consistent and stable routine, as well as healthcare, food choices, emotional wellbeing, and much-needed social services. This education platform, platform must restart in September with proper social distancing guidelines in place. This is an unprecedented global pandemic, not seen since the nineteen eighteen Spanish flu. But we will need to reinvent, reinvent guidelines to return to school. Maine has flattened the curve in the country and our leaders have done an outstanding job keeping our citizens safe. I have no doubt with the assistance from parents and educators, they can restart our schools safely. I've witnessed firsthand with my eight-year-old son, the mental and emotional difficulties in remote learning. He desperately misses his school and the interaction with his teachers and friends. Seeing them in the Zoom meetings, although a positive thing, he's had negative effects on him. It is simply not enough human interaction. Thank you for your time, Erica Kramer. Sorry, I should have that name wrong up top. Erica Kramer."
Thanks, thanks, Lorna, for reading us. Okay, um, item seven point O, staff report, Patrick, anything?
No, not one tonight.
Okay. Eight point O, committee reports. Uh, eight point one, finance, uh, committee. Uh, we did, um, meet, uh, as, as a finance committee, um, last week and had some additional, uh, discussion around some, uh, comments, suggestions that, that Jenny had sent to the board regarding, uh, some areas that, that, she thought would be, uh, possible for additional reductions in the budget. And, um, from there, I'm going to pass it over to, to you, Patrick.
Okay, I mean, the finance committee discussed, uh, reducing the budget. And we did look at some different areas. What we discussed at that meeting was reducing expenditures by eighty-eight thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars. And seventy thousand and change was from our health insurance reduction that reflected a zero percent in increase in rates, which we were notified at the beginning of April about. Uh, eleven thousand, five hundred roughly was removing the additional support position at the central office. And around seven thousand was, uh, removing some funding in our maintenance facilities budget for some of the work that we were able to do out of this year's budget. And then we talked about increasing the revenues, um, by an additional hundred and fifty thousand, uh, added to balance forward, which would reflect our additional project, projected savings in the current budgets. So we sent you, um, and those of you that are on the call for finance committee, the local contribution, if the board supported this, would be two point one percent, uh, of the local contribution. So, um, that's really, I think, the, you know, unless Deb, you want to add something, but I think that was the crux of our conversation.
And I think, um, Deb, did you want to add anything?
No, I think he covered, he covered everything and, uh, basically that's where we're at, at this point in time.
And I think, and I think the, uh, conclusion, uh, at the conclusion of the finance committee meeting, it wa, it was a consensus of, of the committee that, that, uh, the board should accept these further reductions, uh, to the budget. And, um, I, I would like to, to have a vote on that, um, unless there's further discussion at this point under, under the committee report. And, and we'll, we'll take a vote on it under new business as item eleven point two. Uh, does anyone else from the finance committee wish to add anything at this point?
Steve, this is Lauren, this is Lorna. Would you mind if I just clarify something with, with everyone and Deb?
Sure.
So from that meeting, I, it looks, according to my last, my various renditions of the budget, it looks like we went from a three point three nine percent local appropriation down to two point one eight, uh, two point one oh. Is, is it correct, Deb, from the three point three nine, the, the rendition before this latest?
That's correct.
To two point one, okay.
To two point one, yes.
Okay, that was it. Thank you.
I mean, we're, we're, we're not, we're not at a point yet where, uh, the budget will come back to us again at the June meeting, uh, if, if there's, and we're getting additional, we're getting more and more information, uh, about the CARES Act and, and any implications that that might have for the district. Uh, that information has, has yet to be, has yet to, uh, we, we've yet to get final, uh, uh, input from, from the state on how those funds will flow to the individual districts. So there, there is undoubtedly more information that we will receive between now and June as it might affect the budget. But at this point, we, uh, the committee has recommended and, and will, will, I'll, I'll ask for a vote of the board to accept this, uh, these eighty thousand dollars in additional cuts, under new business, unless anyone has any other comments.
Uh, one question, Steve.
Yeah, yeah.
Just to reiterate, what, what date would be the first data payment would be due from the municipalities? For the new budget?
It would be after the budget is voted on July fourteenth. As soon as that's voted on and if it's approved, then basically I will do an assessment and send it to the town. So technically the twentieth of the month, which doesn't give a whole lot of time, but, um, they're used to a monthly payment, so maybe it will be a little bit later than the norm, but, uh, that's what they've, that's how they send their payments now.
And if a town hasn't been able to have a town but, town meeting yet because of, of meeting, um, requirements, would they be, would they be sending you a payment based on last year's budget?
Yes.
Okay.
They could do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, Jen, uh, Jenny actually raised a point, kind of, uh, tangentially that I, I had meant to mention that there is, we, we have a, a, a district budget meeting on the schedule for June thirtieth. Um, and there has been some discussion at the state level about whether those meetings are practical, whether they can be done in, um, uh, through technology. Um, uh, are they practical? Will be, well, by June thirtieth, will we be able to meet, uh, in, in person to conduct such a meeting? So there, there are still some questions outstanding on, on, uh, the, how the district will or might not conduct a, a district, a district budget meeting. So we have, we have that information to come to us as well.
Steve, facilities, Steve, facilities committee met, uh,
Oh, yeah.
In, in person with our masks and all, uh, with Patrick and Dave Richards and went over the facilities request and the facilities budget for next year. And as you mentioned before, Dave is getting, getting some work done now out of this year's budget, which will not be necessary for next year. So there's a little bit of, uh, wiggle room there. That's about it, though. Everything else was very well justified, particularly in light of the fact that we're in mid-year, we're going to be moving, uh, into the new building and there'll be additional expenses.
Okay, we left you off the agenda altogether, Bill, but I wrote you down it as eight point four, so you're officially on the agenda now.
Oh, perfectly all right.
Right, thank, thank you.
I just wanted to let you know that, uh, we did get together and, uh, and review Dave's budget.
Okay, thanks. Any, any questions of Bill on, on facilities issues?
No, not for me.
Okay. Um, eight point two, um, high school building project, Patrick?
Yeah, nothing major since the last meeting. Uh, some of you, uh, came and took some tours. I hope you enjoyed those. And those of you that would like a, a tour, just give me a call and we're happy to take you up there. I, we were hoping to send you, um, to watch a video link this evening. But, uh, when Dean and Damian tried it, it froze and wouldn't work well in this situation. But I did send that to you today. I just thought it was a neat way for you to see the progress of the school without hearing me ramble, you know, every meeting about what we're doing. So hopefully, take a look at that. Let me know if you have any questions. Um, and again, thank you to Damian and Dean who went, went up there with a drone and also did an inside tour as well. And Tanner, I just sent that to you probably ten minutes ago. Um, you know, the window installation, drywall and electrical work, you know, continue to happen. And those of you that went for a tour, um, you know, I, hopefully you were kind of surprised, impressed with the progress that's being made. And, um, that's really all I have at this point.
Thanks, thanks, Patrick. Yeah, uh, a small, a group of us did do a tour on Monday and I know, uh, Bill and, and, um, did a tour, Alan did it, that's right, Alan was with you, did a tour on, on Tuesday. So, um, I do, uh, I'm, I'm not sure Patrick will arrange another one in the immediate future, but I do, uh, encourage, uh, uh, members of the board to get up and take a look at, at the progress that's being made. And, and, uh, you get, you get a much better idea now and going forward, they'll all, you know, things are going to change pretty rapidly at this point, but just get a good idea of what that school is going to look like. Thanks, Patrick. Uh, eight, eight point three, the ad hoc distance learning committee update. As I said, we did, uh, we had our inaugural meeting, um, over a week ago now and, and, um, uh, at the beginning of, of, of last week, Katie, uh, and, uh, and Dean began to circulate, um, um, questionnaires and we are, we've received comment, we've received those comments back. I'm going to let Katie address this, obviously. Um, I, I do want to just say a couple of things and just relate back to the public comments that we received, uh, from those individuals down in Phippsburg. And, and, and I apologize, I did not see the, uh, comments on, on, uh, on, uh, the summer, uh, the summer program for special ed and, and other activities. But I, I do want folks to be, to be, um, aware and, and, and confident that, that the issues that, that were raised in those, in those public comments are kinds of issues that we're dealing with in the ad hoc, uh, distance learning, uh, com, committee, uh, looking at, at what our experience has been and, and what we're going to have to do going forward. So those comments are, comments offered by, by those individuals were, were both very appropriate, very timely. Um, and, and, uh, hopefully it, it will, it will help, um, shape our response, uh, to this situation, uh, going forward. So, um, so I'm going to turn this one over to Katie to talk about the ad hoc distance learning committee questionnaire.
So, um, I don't have a ton more to add because we've only had one meeting, but, um, the staff, student, and family survey is complete. It closed at midnight on, um, Friday night. And so thank you to Dean for helping create all those. It was a lot of hard work. And, um, Bob Jordan has been working all weekend to process the results through today. Um, and we're getting there, um, in terms of having, um, we're putting them, all the results on a website that we'll be able to share with the committee, um, as well as the school board. Um, and so the results will probably be ready around three or four o'clock tomorrow. Those will get sent out in advance, so the committee has time to look at them, um, before we meet on Wednesday. Um, I don't have information really, um, well, I've been sifting through comments. Um, I don't have anything sort of big that I want to share now because I want to give the committee an opportunity to look at everything first and sort of choose the pattern they'd like to share out with the board because that was the work plan. We told them what was going to happen, but what Patrick and I did want to share with you all today is, um, the participation results for the survey. Um, so for the student survey, we have about a thousand students, around four hundred took it, six through twelve. Remember, this is just six through twelve students. So four hundred, six through twelve students took it, so that's around forty, thirty-nine, forty percent. Um, for staff, we have a hundred and seventy-four staff took it of our roughly. For staff, we have a hundred and seventy-four staff took it of our roughly three hundred-ish, so it's around fifty to sixty percent. Depends on how you determine. We did it by the number of people who are paid. That's not necessarily all the people who would have gotten their survey. So it's about fifty-five to sixty percent. And then the family number is actually trickier because we we did have four hundred and forty families take the survey. We have a hundred, one thousand eight hundred and fifty-one students. However, there are siblings. So I just randomly took out five hundred. I assumed we probably had at least five hundred siblings in our district. It could be more, it could be slightly less. But if you take that number and do an estimate, it's about thirty percent family participation. It's probably a little higher. That's probably a minimum. I'm guessing we have more than five hundred sibling, families with siblings. So I would say our numbers are probably all, you know, around forty and then staff one being slightly higher at fifty, fifty-five or sixty.
Thanks, Katie. Any 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 comments? I mean, those are pretty, at least from my perspective, fairly impressive rates of of return.
Yeah, I mean, for those of you who have done big surveys before, when you get twenty-five percent, you usually get excited. So yeah, I'm I was very pleased with that. And, you know, I I think that I've looked the most at the student one and I it was great how honest kids were and how it seemed like, I'll just say, my initial reaction was the things we were trying to accomplish seemed like they were happening, which was great. And they had some good ideas of how we can get better, which is the whole point of doing this. So that's good. But next time we meet, I'll have a much more detailed report for you all. And before then, we'll also give you access to that website, even for those of you who are on the committee since you're a school board member. So you'll get to see more survey comments than you probably would ever want to see.
Thanks, Katie.
Sure.
I'll go back, any any comments or? Okay, this, the survey is 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 something that that the committee wanted to to get out, get out quickly and we're pleased that we're able to to meet that objective. There there are also other metrics that that I think the committee will want to look at and and those are not generated through survey research, but but just other statistics of, you know, Tim, for example, has done has done food service programs. I think we'll we'll want to look at the success of that effort to to reach, reach the population of kids that that we think need that assistance. At our at our last board meeting, Eric spoke about engaging the kids. And and I think we we need to get a better sense of what that engagement, what that measure of engagement means and and how we can, you know, quantify that to some extent. Again, to get a to get a sense of of how how our students and and families have been able to have been able to work in this remote learning environment. So there's, there's a lot of information. I think the surveys will hopefully give us some good, some good insight into this this experiment in in remote learning. But but there are other metrics out there that I think we'll have to identify and look at as well. Okay, thanks, Katie. Patrick, did you want to talk about? At least briefly about reopening?
Yeah, I'll talk to that real real quick. I I do want to say, just so people are aware, we can still put it on next month's agenda. But Thursday, last Thursday, May fourteenth at nine thirty-nine, Nita did send that email that had both policies in it. It had the one that for a second reading tonight, but it also had that policy BE in it. So we had our, you know, we had our policy at seven forty-five and she sent it at nine forty that same morning. So you do have it. I know we've sent you a lot of emails lately, so we can certainly wait, you know, to next month if you'd like. So planning for next year, you know, Katie just got done talking about the remote learning, but I also wanted you to know that we've started what I would call an initial planning team to focus on different scenarios for reopening in the fall. And really felt like we wanted to start small. So it would be Katie and I, two principals and two nurses that meet tomorrow and probably will have a couple of meetings before. You know, my plan is to expand this to an, from the initial planning team to a district leadership team. And that would include, you know, such other people as the principals, athletic director, facilities director, technology director, public safety officials, public health consultants, staff, parents. And at the same time, we'll also be consulting with the CDC, DOE and also legal counsel. So I see this as the responsibilities of district leadership, leadership team to include researching best practices, speaking with other school districts, reviewing directives and recommendations from governmental and public health agencies and gathering input from public safety officials and public health consultants. And also, the other idea is to have school-based teams because every school is a little unique and different. So the school-based teams would be comprised of teachers, student support, personnel, nurses and administration. And their responsibility would include participating in school-based reviews, suggesting site-specific options for ensuring health and safety of our students and staff and reviewing and commenting on the school reopening plan that I see the district leadership team presenting to the school board for final approval at some point this summer, probably the end of July, first of August. So, for example, I'm not saying that these are going to be our only options, but tiered options that we'll be discussing and considering, but not limited to, is, you know, a full schedule where all students would return for a full day. A modified schedule, maybe where fifty percent can come back or some percentage of students could come back to school on a modified schedule. And then another tier might be remote learning or it could be a hybrid approach. So I just wanted you to be aware that, you know, we're starting this process and the Department of Education could come out and tell us what we need to do. But we need to do our due diligence as a district to have these conversations. So things that I sent you or just other things that we'll be talking about is stepped up health and hygiene measures, smaller class sizes based on square footage. Again, the staggered schedules, younger kids first. Would we bring younger kids back before older kids? Possibly a revised calendar. You know, we're going to talk about assemblies, athletic events, co-curricular events. And and again, in all of this, like Steve talked to, the administrative team and the staff are always talking about how can we best support students when we when we do come back? How do we provide that additional support academically, but also in the social emotional piece? And that CARES money that we're talking about has really been a focus for us of how to get some extra help to to some of our students. So in a nutshell, I mean, again, we have our first meeting tomorrow and some of this process could change a little bit. But I just wanted to put it on your radar screen.
Thanks, Patrick. Any any questions, Patrick?
Yes, Steve, I had just a question. How how does that meeting or the survey, you know, the distance learning surveys? How does that all tie into the professional development that's being that's scheduled for after the last day, student's last day?
Katie, you want to go first?
Sure. So I would say they're they're kind of all interwoven where what happens in the committee that Steve is a part of, that all of those comments are impacting or making suggestions for the actual distance learning piece. The sort of contingency smaller committee that Patrick was just talking about goes beyond the instructional part and would also need to include transportation, nutrition, nursing, staff safety, childcare, all of those other kind of categories since, you know, we're we're more than just what we teach our students in terms of, you know, how the whole district works. And so whatever outcomes those two groups come up with would be presented to staff during those, the initial June time, because it's going to impact how they do their grade level planning, what they're preparing for, what versions of everything they're preparing for, for, you know, September, what adjustments they need to make to assessments they're doing, how they're going to shift their resource collection. And so principals each have come up with a daily professional development plan that goes through each of the days. So, you know, June eighth, June ninth, June tenth, whatnot, all the way through the eighteenth. And it has two parts to it. One is, you know, if for some reason we can't be together, what all the tasks look like. The other side is if we can actually be in person. And so it's anything from a task list of to-dos, like making class lists for next year and that sort of thing, curriculum items, some committees that need to meet as well as meetings that need to take place. And so it's essentially a pretty chock full plan of work items, professional development and meetings that will be occurring. A lot of the professional development and what we'll be pushing teachers to really think about will be around differentiation and also learning what I like to call the sort of neighboring standards. So if you're used to teaching third grade, you're actually going to need to have a meeting with the students, teachers that you're getting from this year to learn where they left off. You're going to need to study the second grade standards because now you're not just going to be teaching third grade, you need to be doing some catch-up work. And you're going to need to also make sure that you're differentiating. So if you have some students that are farther behind or farther ahead, you're coming up with ways to manage that all in your classroom. And so that that's really going to be the focus of all of those days. So, you know, it's a lot of days, but looking at the lists, I wish we had more, to be honest. There's a lot to get done.
Thank you.
Thanks, Katie. I I think I think from, thanks for asking the question, Jen, because I think from Katie's response, we we continually, we continue to get a clearer picture of the enormity of this of this task. And I know we are just one school district in Maine and and one school district in the country and we're every district, I shouldn't say everyone, but I could probably say ninety-nine percent of our the districts out there are all struggling with this same set of 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 issues and parameters. And I'm thankful, I've said it before, I'm thankful we've got the administrative team and the teachers and the community that we have behind us here in the RSU to get us through this. And we will succeed. We will, we will persevere, so. Okay, any any other questions of Patrick or Jen or Patrick or Katie? No, thank you. Nine point oh, Deb, financial report.
Tonight, we're looking at the end of April and we've spent a little over twenty-five million out of our thirty-three million dollar budget. We've got encumbered salaries of just a little over six million, so that covers all the salaries that we are paying. And so overall, we've spent ninety-three point two percent. Last year, we had spent ninety-three point six, so we're right in line with our expenditure habits. Tuition, I mean, revenue, we've brought in almost twenty-eight million and we have about six million more to go. And that's all basically our town assessments. Tuition is coming in like we expected. The little bit that we won't receive for revenue might be probably five thousand dollars between student activities and miscellaneous revenues. But overall, we're expecting pretty much everything that we had planned on. So I think we're in pretty good shape and we're hoping for that balance so that we can increase the balance forward for next year's budget.
Thanks, Deb. Thanks. I, you know, any any questions of Deb? No? I I and I guess it's just a question for Deb or Patrick. Given the difficulty of budgeting, of of adopting a a budget in this environment, has there been any discussion at 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 the state level of perhaps changing those carryover limits and giving districts the opportunity to be a little bit more flexible on how we might need to respond to unanticipated expenses in September or net the whole next year, I guess? Any any discussion of that?
Well, they're they're, the DOE is meeting daily with all the business managers and to go over this CARES Act funding. And there's lots of discussion on, you know, different situations that may come up. As far as carrying forward monies, there's that, the law in place that, you know, we're not supposed to carry forward more than three percent. So as long as you stay within that over the course of a couple of years, then we're good. But no, I I think, you know, right now, everybody is pretty much waiting for those allocations for the CARES money because it's hard to plan what you're going to do with that until we know the amount. So.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, Deb. Any any questions for Deb? No? Okay, thanks. Ten point oh, old business. Ten point one, we have a second reading of policy JJIAA, private school students' access to public school co-curricular, interscholastic and extracurricular activities. This this is an action item. Do I have a motion to adopt this policy?
So will Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion by Bill. Do we have a second?
A second.
A second by Jen. Yep, second by Jenny. So motion by Bill, second by Jenny. Discussion, any discussion on this? We did, we did talk about this in in Policy Committee and and a recommendation's been made to create a form to cover that written notification, the specification of a written notification in the policy. And and a form will be developed and and shared with the board at at a at a future point before the end of the year. But I think we we get the policy in place so that so that we know where we stand for the So if there's no discussion, I'll do a roll call vote. Anita?
Aye.
Lorna?
Nay.
Jenny?
Aye.
Megan?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Tanner?
Aye.
Aye, and I vote aye. Okay, thank you very much. Eleven point oh, new business. We have eleven point one, review of new state legislation regarding the food service program. And there are two subpoints here, LD three fifty-nine and LD five seventy-seven. Tim, you want to take this discussion?
Sure. Can you hear me?
Yep.
So Vida had asked me to go into detail about these to kind of explain at length, you know, what was involved with this legislation. But I think in light of the material that we've sent in and considering what's going on, basically, both of these pieces of legislation, you've seen material come home to you. They require action by the board to either move forward with the programs that are required in each of these bills or to opt out of these. So LD five seventy-seven would require us to have So, uh, LD 577, uh, would require us to have a. After-school meal program, that would either be a dinner program or a snack program. Uh, LD 359, uh, requires a breakfast after the bell or a second chance breakfast program. Um, I can answer any questions, but. Again, you know, upon consideration, without going into too much detail, I'm recommending that we opt out of both of these pieces of legislation.
I didn't think that.
Okay, so the recommendation, um. Would be, we, would, the, the district has an option whether to participate in both these programs, right, Tim?
Yes, the, I, I feel that in both cases, these are unfunded mandates. They don't really get at the core of our mission, which is breakfast and lunch. Um, you know, and offering an after-school meal program while it sounds good. Would require additional staffing issues and additional costs. And I don't feel that the reimbursement, um, would really justify the program. Um, breakfast after the bell, that's something that we do currently at different schools. And it's successful in some schools, it's not successful in other schools. Uh, it's something that I continue to pursue. But under this legislation, it would require us to offer that program at Dyke Newell and at Fisher Mitchell. Um, wouldn't really function at Fisher Mitchell because of the way that that gym slash cafeteria is utilized. And, uh, prior to this whole COVID thing going down, Jen and I had talked about. Doing some form of a second chance breakfast at Dyke Newell. But I'd much rather let the district make those choices than have it be mandated by the state. And so our, you know, our option is we either comply or we vote to opt out.
Okay, any, um, any questions of Tim?
Uh, this is Lorna, hi, Tim.
Hi, Lorna.
So, um, we do provide breakfast and we provide lunch. And so I would agree that, I mean, I know you've spoke of this before. But if we would have the opportunity to really hone in and continue to improve. Those programs, expand participation, um, and really try to get over this. You know, to try to understand the participation and the, the completion of forms. For free and reduced lunch, or now free lunch, excuse me. So to me, that provides us some flexibility and, and a focus to really hone in without kind of muddying the waters on. Bringing more programs into district that might have, may or may not have success. Or compete with other existing community programs too. So I don't know if that's right or wrong, but it seems like if we offer breakfast and lunch. And we have the opportunity to increase participation for free lunch, um, I would seem to, to agree with your opinion.
Thanks, Lorna. Any, any other questions of Tim?
Um, uh, Tim, do you think, do you have any feedback on that question or how Lorna referred to as the, the reduced, um, meal plan? Do you think having a dinner meal would help increase people wanting to participate in the free and reduced program?
I, I, I don't believe so. I, I think, you know, as I said in some of the materials that I passed on to Patrick, that. We would have difficulty staffing that program, we would see increased costs. And I don't think that the state reimbursement rate would cover all of our food and labor costs. Um, I think that there are other organizations within the community that, that offer programs like that. And, um, I don't really think it's part of our core mission. I think we really need to focus on breakfast and lunch, work on getting participation numbers up there. Um, before we begin looking at, you know, an afternoon or evening program. And as I said before, they're, they're unfunded mandates, this legislation is all well-intentioned. But there's a cost to the district and I don't think the reimbursement in either case would cover the expenditure at this point.
Tim, can I ask one more question? This is Lorna again. So it, it also sounds like, on the little bit I was reading on that today, we also have to have some kind of mechanism. Like, not only preparing the lunches, but it doesn't, don't we have to have like an ask, an active after-school program that isn't just competition sports? Like, we have to have some kind of after-school program to do this at? Is that right, or is that an overgeneralization?
No, no, that's correct. So the program that the, that this legislation is pushing is CACFP. And the CACFP program requires that you do it in concert with, um, an after-school activity. That is completely volunteer or all-inclusive. Um, whereas competitive sports wouldn't qualify because, um, not everybody can participate. So we would have to tie it in to those schools where we offered it with, as you mentioned. Some kind of after-school program that either did exist or something we created. Um, I just, it's not a great fit, as far as I'm concerned, for what we're doing right now.
Thank you.
And we can always opt into CACFP at any time, we can participate in that. Um, the same as the breakfast after the bell program. We currently do it, as I said, at some schools, other schools we don't. This legislation, um, at the state level requires us to do it. Because we have over 50% free and reduced at Dyke Newell and Fisher Mitchell. And our only way to get out from under it is to opt out. It's not to say that we couldn't do it in the future, it's not to say that we couldn't work on it in, in some way, shape or form currently. But, uh, in order to comply with the legislation, we either need to move forward with it, or we need to opt out.
Yeah, I was going to, I was going to note that, 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 that although we're, we might be making the decision at this point to opt out. It's something that we could revisit in the future. Um, and I think Tim's, uh, at least for me, Tim's argument that we should focus on. Those programs that we have now and, and we know we need to continue to build and strengthen. Uh, to, to, um, uh, get those programs up to the level where we think we should be. Is, is a sound way, for me, is a sound way to approach, uh, to approach, uh, feeding programs in the district. Any other comments?
We take this one at a time, Steve?
Um, well, why, why don't we take them one at a time? And, so we have, uh, LD 359 and, um.
I'll move that we opt out of participation in that program.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second that, this is Lorna.
We have a motion by Bill, second by Lorna. Uh, all in favor of opting out of, uh, LD 359, um, Anita?
Aye.
Lorna?
Aye.
Jenny?
Aye.
Megan?
Aye.
Uh, Bill?
Aye.
Tanner?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Okay, uh, 11.1B, LD 577, do I have a motion?
I'll move that we opt out of participation in LD 577.
Okay, we have a second for that?
A second.
Okay, so motion by Bill, second by Lorna. Uh, again, roll call, Anita?
Aye.
Lorna?
Aye.
Jenny?
Aye.
Megan?
Aye.
Uh, Bill?
Aye.
Tanner?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, okay. Thanks, Tim.
All right, thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you, Tim.
Oh, stay around to the end, Tim. Um, so we are going to remove the, um, uh, uh. Under new business, uh, BE, uh, school board meetings, because I, I think in, in spite of clarification from Patrick. I, I still don't think, uh, we, we have all seen it, right, Bill? I think, Bill, you were the one who.
I haven't.
Okay, so we'll, we'll, we'll take that on first reading at, at the next meeting. Um, 12.0, uh, next meeting dates and locations. We have a, um, our next, uh, board meeting scheduled for June 8th.
Hey, Steve. Sorry, sorry to interrupt, I didn't know if you wanted to have that budget update kind of, um, support vote from the board or not?
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. We, we pushed that down to new business, I drew an arrow on my, on my notes and, uh, I just, I just walked right by it. So anyways, under new business, um, I did, I did want to have, uh, take a vote. On the recommendations of the finance committee to, uh, um, direct that additional $80,000 in, in reductions. Patrick, do you have, or Deb, do you have the exact number?
Yeah, it was eight, 88,928. And then we were also, the finance committee also was in support of increasing revenues by that 150,000.
Right. Okay, so, um, I would, I would like, uh, a board vote on this. Um, so we have two, uh, two parts, uh, to the motion. One, one would be to accept 88,928 dollars in additional reductions to the budget. And, and, uh, second part of the motion would be to increase our revenues by 150,000 dollars. Do I have a motion to approve those two actions?
I'll make a motion to approve those two actions, two motions. Uh, I'm making the motion, sorry.
No, that's all right. So I have a motion from Lorna, second.
I'll second.
Second, from Jenny. Um, okay, roll call, Anita?
Aye.
Lorna?
Aye.
Jenny?
Aye.
Megan?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Tanner?
Aye. Aye.
And I vote aye as well, okay. Thanks, Patrick, thanks for the reminder. Um, okay, 12.0, next meeting dates and locations. So we have a, a virtual board meeting, uh, for second reading of the budget and, and this, uh, on June 8th. At 6 o'clock. And we can, we can have further discussions on the budget before that. Meeting, if, if, uh, if board members would like to, uh, get the finance committee together again, we can do that. And certainly we can have additional discussions on that, on that night, on June 8th. But that's the night when we will have to, as a board, have to vote to adopt the budget. And, um, mechanically after the vote, um, we'll work with, uh, central office staff. For each of us to come in individually, or at least to practice social distancing. Uh, because we will have to, uh, sign those warrants in person. Um. District budget meeting, I think I've mentioned already, is currently scheduled for June 30th. Uh. There, there are conversations ongoing up in Augusta about how we are to conduct that district budget meeting. And I think we have to, uh, we have to stand by until, until the commissioner and the governor and, and whoever else has to weigh in on that. Um, the budget validation referendum is still scheduled, it's still on schedule for July 14th. And our next regular meeting would be Monday, June 22nd. Um, you know, typically we haven't met during the summer, during the summer months, but I, I wouldn't be. Uh, I'm not, I'm not going to predict it at this point, but I'm, I'm pretty sure that, that we are going to be, um. Uh, meeting in July and perhaps even in August as we look forward to. Um, decisions that need to be made on getting, getting schools started back up again in September. So, I just put out there as a possibility, those dates aren't fixed, but there's a possibility. Excuse me. So, any other questions, anything, uh, anyone wants to raise? If not, um, we're glad to see Bill's face, I think Bill's actually enjoying this, uh, online stuff, so.
Yeah, you look good on camera, Steve.
Yeah, as you, you put on a clean shirt, you're looking good, looking good.
Well, I wouldn't guarantee that.
So anyway, so, uh, I need a motion to adjourn?
So who?
Okay, we have a motion by Bill, do a second?
Second.
Second by Jenny, uh, we'll have to do the roll call, Anita?
Aye.
Lorna?
Aye.
Jenny?
Aye.
Megan?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Tanner?
Aye.
Aye, and I vote aye as well. Okay, thank you all very much, have a good evening.
Bye.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
We got Lorna back just at the end.